Good evening, everyone, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on council and city staff. I call to order the public work session for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
And Madam City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Greetings, Mayor Glover, members of City Council and our Portsmouth family. Today, we have three presentations. Our first presentation will be by Ms. Sherri Neal. She will provide an overview of the potential 2023 state and federal legislative initiatives. Please advise if you would like any additional proposed legislation to be added. Mrs. Neal?
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager and staff, it's the attorney. This evening, I am going to share with you the draft 2023 potential state and legislative, state and federal legislative initiatives as proposed by your staff. Prior to beginning this presentation, I just want to let you know that the 2023 state legislative session is going to be what's known as the short session because it's the off-budget year session. It's a 45-day session, and it's also an election year. So you have all 100 members of the House of Delegates up for reelection and all 40 members of the Senate up for reelection. We're anticipating that they're going to do their best to get out on time because they need to begin to, uh, their campaigns. And several of them are running in new districts because of redistricting, so that's going to be another issue. The Senate and the House have both imposed limits on the numbers of bills that they're going to be putting, um, putting forward. At the Senate, it's about 20 before prefiling and six after prefiling, and with the House, it's around 15 with about six or so after prefile. So with that, we're going to move forward, I think. I moved backwards. So our, my presentation is going to include our 2023 potential legislative initiatives to include some state budget amendment requests, state public policy initiatives, statewide public policy initiatives, and federal public policy initiatives, followed by a few of the important dates and next steps, and any questions that you may have, I will do my best to answer. So if you recall, in our 2022 legislative package, we had requested a bill that would have created a supplemental tolling program for the Elizabeth River Crossing, which would have been for people who would make over $30,000 but less than $45,000. That particular legislation did not make it through the legislative process. However, both of the chairs of the House and Senate Committee that heard it had agreed that they would send a letter to the Virginia Department of Transportation to request information on how the current program was being implemented. Right after the 2022 session ended, the General Assembly went into special session, which technically they're still in it, so it took a while to try to get the letters done. I worked diligently with Delegate Scott's office and Senator Lucas's office to follow up on the letters, and eventually through Senator Lucas's office, we were able to secure the letter from Senator Howell, which was sent over to VDOT. The end result of the efforts is that a agreement has been reached where for a new program that I begin, begins, I believe, next month, the first of next month, it's going to be for anyone who lives within Hampton Roads area who meets the income-eligible household level of $50,000 or less. The reimbursement for the tolls is going to be done within 24 to 48 hours of you using the facility. And with that being the case, presently, there's really no need for us to revisit this at this time in the 2023 session of the General Assembly, but we will continue to monitor for any refinements that need to be done as we move forward. So we have two budget amendments as well. The first one is dealing with the Virginia Port Authority road impact fees. So about 16 years ago, former Delegate Joanna put, had about a million dollars placed into the budget for the whole cities of the port for road maintenance due to the impact of the trucks on our roads. In 16 years, that money has not increased. However, the port has doubled in size, including the Virginia International Gateway. They expanded their sites, including Richmond, and now the new 460 project that they're putting out in Suffolk. The construction of the MLK connector between MLK and, I mean, between I-264 and Route 164 has significantly increased truck traffic on our roads. And also, there's been several bills that have passed through the General Assembly which increased truck weight limits. So all of that taken together, and you look at how much a million dollars bought you in 2006 compared to now, it's about $407,321 difference, or a 40.73% inflation increase over that time. So, and also with the pandemic, the impact of the pandemic, the break in the supply chain, commodities and materials are more expensive now, so therefore, we're looking for a minimum of a million-dollar increase in this budget line. The next budget amendment is dealing with the RACE grant, which is a federal grant. If you remember, we had a press conference recently on that one. We received $19.3 million in a federal grant, leaving a delta of 4.8 million. And so we're asking the state to look favorably on the request and provide the difference that we need to fully fund this project. And supporting this project not only aids in improving public safety in this corridor of the city, but also by revitalizing the area, new businesses and consumers will invest in the city and provide taxable revenue streams, not only for our city, but for the Commonwealth as well. The suggested state public policy initiatives to support, this is not an exclusive list, but it's just highlighting a few of the policies that I wanted, that we're going to support. And these all came out of the member organizations that we are affiliated with, such as Virginia Municipally, Virginia First Cities. And so I'm just going to highlight a few rather than going through the whole list in the interest of time. Starting off with supporting the state assistance to the local law enforcement, which is known as the 599 funding. Support state assistance for decreasing the time demands on police officers with temporary detention orders, or known as TDOs, which is used when people are mentally decompensating. And it includes asking for funding for needed mental health resources and staff that can be used and employed to transition these roles away from our local police officers, which detains them for an enormous, extreme amount of time when they're dealing with these because they can't leave the people in the hospital until the whole process has taken We also are going to, in this, on this screen, so I want to highlight support replacement of the regional gas house. Greenhouse gas initiatives are known as the Reggie Funding, if that program is eliminated. And oppose any state mandated exemptions to the local option sales tax without a viable replacement source. And one other I'd like to point out here is support making the transportation fund whole, which we've lost the funding stream for transportation in Virginia with the elimination of the grocery sales tax. A portion of that tax went to the transportation fund, and that was not replaced by the state. Moving forward, oops, back up, to our suggested federal public policy initiatives, which is also a compilation of some of the initiatives that are in HARUMFA, which we're a member of, that's the Hampton Roads Military Facilities, Federal Facilities Alliance, and National League of Cities. And just touching on a couple of those, we'll support and appropriate the Urban Area Security Initiative, or URC funding for Hampton Roads, which is a joint initiative that we always work on. Support a federal study on the feasibility of establishing an additive manufacturing center of excellence for ship repair and shipbuilding in Hampton Roads. Support President Biden's FY 2023 budget request of 246.2 million for military installations in Hampton Roads. Out of that, 22.5 million is scheduled for a project at the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, where we'd be direct recipients of. And oppose any unfunded mandates for unified financial reporting systems for local governments. There's a move in Congress that they want to have all local governments' financial reporting systems unified, so it makes it easier for reporting to them, and that would be an undue fiscal hardship on a lot of locality, so we're opposing anything of that nature. The next steps would be on the 22nd of next month, we'll have our joint meeting with our General Assembly delegation, and you're scheduled to adopt by legislate, by resolution, the legislative packages for the state and federal. In January, the first session of the next Congress will begin on the 3rd, and the General Assembly session begins on the 11th. And as I stated earlier, it's like a 45-day session, so we're looking at it ending somewhere around the 26th or so of February. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
I do have a question, uh, Ms. Neal. On page, I think it's page four, where we talked about recommending the increase for the port and, and those costs, how do we come up with the, with the 1 million increase recommended? I know that based on the inflation rate I saw where we added an additional 407,000, but I mean, how do we get to the additional 1 million?
Um, it was a minimum increase of a million dollars. We could ask for more.
Okay.
But just minimally, they should give us at least another million, if not more.
Okay, right. But the 400,000 would be in line with inflation, and that's what we're asking for in the best-case scenario?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, is there a recommendation on how many, how much more we should ask for?
No, I think that if we're using the formula, I think that's a reasonable ask to go for at this time, and certainly, we, we are pleased to see that because they are using our roads, there is a lot more traffic, and so we need to be compensated fairly.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Neal, for the presentation. Under the potential state budgets on the page five, so we already received 19.3 million for the federal grant, so we're asking for the additional gap funding to come from the state. Is that an application process, or is that just a ask, budget ask, or how does that get?
Mayor Glover, Councilwoman, this is Lucas Burke. It's not an application process, it's just a straight request for a budget amendment from the state to support the project.
Okay.
Yeah. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the city of Norfolk is doing something similar with their grant, and they're, they're going to ask the state to help fund a large, larger portion than what we're asking for.
And will that require any interaction from you, or, or we just ask, and it goes up with the requests of the, the amendments or the proposals?
Well, we have to submit a budget amendment. We have to submit budget amendments, yeah, ma'am.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Ms. Neal, as always. My question, though, I read in here that numerous bills have recently passed increasing the weight limits that trucks can carry. Whenever I see trucks and weight is a reminder that, and this is more to the council, not to you, Ms. Neal, is a reminder that we don't have a weight enforcement program that's very aggressive. I, I don't know when the last time we've ticketed somebody, maybe the manager could update us on that. I know Chesapeake receives quite a bit of income for overweight trucks, and, uh, when you look at the West Norfolk Bridge and some of the roads around here, those trucks cause a lot of damage when they're overweight. So we, we should be enforcing the proper weight on it so it, they don't destroy our roads. So maybe some feedback on that, Ms. Manager, would, would be good.
Yes, sir, we'll do a report back.
And one other question I had for you. Based on your experience, I know you've been up there at the General Assembly for quite some time, and we appreciate the work that you've put in. Is there any value on some of these legislative initiatives and items for us to show up as a, as a council or members of council to, to advocate for these things? I know you do your job, and certainly, we don't want to interfere with your job, but is there any value in folks from the community and others showing up when these discussions take place?
Thank you for that question, and that's an excellent one. Yes, and yes, and yes, yes. I often say to all the staff here, my coworkers, that I consider myself to be a generalist, and they are the professionals in their particular areas. So when we have something that definitely crosses their, their portfolio, I definitely need them. It's always good to have council members, citizens, whomever, to speak in favor of what we're proposing, and they have, technology has come along, especially after the pandemic, where a lot of times, you don't even have to come to Richmond, you can actually participate via electronic means through Zoom. So there's always an opportunity to show that we have support for the initiatives that we are requesting, including the budget amendments.
Thank you very much. And one of the things, if I could, Madam Manager, at the point in which we determine what our legislative agenda is going to be in terms of the package, and when perhaps meetings will be taking place, could you kind of follow up and get us a schedule for council, so at least we know what things are taking place, coordinate with you guys, and when, and perhaps if we can participate, or if we can be there in person, we, we would know when and where to be?
Absolutely, sir, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Next on the agenda, we have Interim Chief Jenkins, who will provide a crime update for us.
Good evening, Chief.
So I'm going to report out on the, our updated quarterly numbers, year-to-date. In particular, I will go through some highlights of our crime numbers. These numbers are in comparison to not only this year, but our numbers from 2021. One of the things that you will note in the highlight of the numbers, obviously, we, uh, the one that jumps out, of course, is that year-to-date, we are at 31 homicides for the year in comparison to our 36 for last year. We are, of course, working to, hoping that those numbers will not surpass our number from last year. And with that being said, we are utilizing, in best-case practices, and intel, trying to get individuals that we know that are associated with some of the ones that have already been committed for the potential for retaliation and things that, into custody and identify it as fast as possible. Our violent crimes, again, continue to trend up. You'll notice that most of them are, are in, as it stands, when comparison to our first two quarters, which have been significantly higher than the previous. One of the things that a lot of departments experience in comparison is that those numbers are going to be significantly higher when you compare them to 2020 and 2021, which when we were dealing with the pandemic itself. When folks were quarantined and not necessarily out, we experienced, experienced, uh, industry lows when it came to crime. Burglars were down, larcenies were down, of course homicides because folks were out. Now we're emerging from a pandemic, and a lot of the resources that were related to pandemic money, things of that nature are now drying up, so a lot of our violent crime is starting to uptick. I wanted to point out that for, as it stands, year-to-date, at this point, we have, are at a, for this quarter, we are at a 42% reduction in our robbery, commercial robberies, a 11% reduction in our aggravated assaults, and those aggravated assaults are anytime, everything from gunshot wounds, stabbings, anything related to that. For our violent crime as it relates to, excuse me, our property crimes, our property crimes, we're experiencing, based on a lot of good work by our officers and detectives, we've experienced a 6% reduction in our property crimes. You will notice across the board, a lot of green, and that green is obviously for us good, because those are where we're showing progress. You'll compare those numbers from January to March, which, 31st, which is our first quarter, and our second quarter, April, to July 30th. Obviously, July 3rd, July 1st until September was our third quarter, where we started to see a, a large or a more significant impact as to what we were dealing with. A lot of that was us reevaluating the way that we were utilizing resources, and also putting additional resources in those areas that we know where we've had our highest crimes. We've used a lot of things to include data-driven policing, where we're reevaluating, particularly where our resources are needed, and trying to get them there during the times where our crimes continue to, continue to peak as much as possible. But with, but with the same thought of going in and dealing with those offenders that we know traditionally are the ones that are committing crimes, those ones that we know when they're out, they're the ones that are usually out that are doing burglaries based on histories and repeat offenders. We've gotten away from going in with a heavy-handed, zero-tolerance approach, because those approaches for us have traditionally gotten us in trouble with alienating additional parts of the community where they're not necessarily the ones that are out committing these crimes. So we're definitely going in with a laser focus with our known offenders that are, have, not only that we know are committing crimes, but have continued to be repeat offenders over and over again. So again, at this point, we're at a 6% reduction in that, in crime for our property crimes. For our violent crimes comparison August to September, again, September, we had four homicides as compared to three, and the month prior with a 33% increase based on that. Outside of that instance, the rest of our numbers all trended down when, as it related to violent crimes. Again, we, we, our department, particularly the officers and detectives, did some outstanding work last month with identifying individuals with their activity and being visual in the community. We deployed some different strategies with putting additional boots on the ground, and pretty much, if you have a uniform and have the ability to put it on, there were times where every single person in the department, including myself, was out on the street working. And again, it is, for us, we've had a lot of success with just getting out and not only making, doing it as enforcement, but then also taking the opportunity to do community engagement, and also to make those instances where we are having communication or contact with the citizens, to make those educational moments that are necessary for us, too. So for, as of last month, we've had a 16% reduction in violent crime. And again, those numbers for us, we're trending down as of this point. Our property crimes for the month of, from, as comparison, we've had a 4% reduction. One of the things for us that is a hindrance for us that we continue to battle with is our, our larcenies. And those larcenies are everything from, in particular, our ABC stores. Our ABC stores are, we've been working very closely with ABC officials to, to see how, if they, ways that they could assist us with things that we would consider just as simple as, can you just close your storeroom door? We've had reports where individuals are walking in and walking out with cases. This is not something that is just unique to Portsmouth. It is a, a group that have been identified, that have been hitting various cities across Hampton Roads. We've had some arrests that have been made in other cities that have stemmed some time, but again, they, these individuals continue to, I guess, research themselves and continue to find themselves back in our community. This slide here will show the, our increase in productivity that we've had during the third quarter. What you will see is a very significant increase in the amount of self-initiated calls from 2,800 in July to 38, 3,200 in August to 5,500 in September. And self-initiated calls are these calls when officers are actually putting themselves on messages, when they're either going to do some type of enforcement action, maybe stepping out to speak with a citizen, maybe seeing something that they view as being suspicious, these things that would traditionally take us out of our vehicles and put us into some type of investigative mode. You'll also see that we've increased everything across the board, from our citations, the incidence of arrests, our traffic stops increased tremendously for, over the last three months. And so again, this is just a small snippet, snippet of the good work that's being produced by your police department and the men and women who serve in this city. They are committed and dedicated to, to trying to make the citizens here safe. A couple of the projects that we are, that I highlighted the last time I was before you are still on task. We are currently beginning to, still in the early phases, our Fuchus integration, are, we have identified work, project managers that are working closely with those individuals to get that system integrated. I had a meeting last week with individuals from Rivers Casino, where they're allowing us to put cameras on the outside of their business, of the casino as well, to help with us being able to secure and being able to monitor the comings and goings of any potential incidents that may happen in that area. We are transcending, we're going into a maintenance mode in, in Prentice Park, where we've had, experienced a lot of success with just getting out in the community. We had our Coffee with a Cop last month, a couple of weeks ago, where we actually took the command bus out to the citizens out there. Traditionally, we do Coffee with a Cop inside of a, one of our local coffee houses, but we actually took the command bus out to the citizens, and you would be amazed the amount of interaction that we had. We plan on doing this, not only in a couple of our housing areas, but also, we're going to take this to Kraddock as well, as we continue along with Rock the Block. As I stated, we are going into a maintenance phase in Kraddock. One of the things that we want to be, make sure that, that you understand, as we move from one place to the other, our goal is not to allow the, the work that we've done to go by the ways, wayside. We want to make sure that we stay on, on point as much as possible with what's happening as we begin to try to address issues and concerns in Kraddock. The last thing I'd like to highlight is our code enforcement team. In September, we had our inaugural meeting of our code enforcement team, which is comprised of several departments within the city, from fire, police, inspections, Commissioner of several departments within the city, from fire, police, inspections, commissioner of revenue, things of that nature. The thought is, when we have issues with not only residences, but businesses within the city, that we would go out as a unit and address those, those issues holistically from our vantage point, so that not one individual department is so responsible for trying to get this, to address this issue. Our goal is not to take people's houses, our goal is not to shut down businesses, our goal is to get people to in compliance and so that they'll be better citizens and be better business owners. So far, we've had some success with that. We're going to continue along as we identify additional problem areas to continue to address. We're also working with the city attorney to make sure that we are following best practices and making sure that we are well within our rights and guidelines as we continue to try to make improvements within the city. With that being said, I am finished. If anyone has any questions, I stand ready.
Well, first of all, Chief, I want to commend you and your staff on the wonderful job that you guys are doing out there every day. We, as council members, I'm sure, we get a lot of information from people in the community, and we appreciate the efforts.
Yes, sir.
Every day that you guys put on out there in the community. So, we're going to open the floor to Councilman Woodard. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Nice presentation, interim Chief Jenkins. Just got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Well, my first question is pertaining to the, I guess, the partnership with Rivers Casino. I think a lot of people have concerns about safety in that particular area, being that it is and will be the potential entertainment district here in Portsmouth. You were saying that you guys have, I guess, made a partnership with cameras. Would these cameras, or would you guys have access to look at things inside the casino and outside, or is it just around the, the area itself?
So, the, the inside cameras will be the custody of the casino. They are governed by the state gaming commission. And it's my understanding that permission has to be granted from the gaming commission in order for us to view those cameras in the event of, should we need to, for investigative processes. Those cameras that will be on the outside will be, belong to the city and which we will have full access and control of. We have, I've worked, talked very closely with the general manager, along with their security team. They're going to have a substantial amount of cameras inside of that facility, and I'm confident that our initial partnership that we've began to foster will be a successful one, and hoping to keep that entity and the folks that come to patronize it safe.
And I, I see that, like I said, I commend you for seeing the reduction in different categories pertaining to crime, but it, it's one category that I wanted to talk about was our traffic stops.
Yes, sir.
I see is, is increased by a large number to, you know, eleven hundred. So, is this pertaining to expired tags, expired, you know, equipment, well, dysfunctional equipment? Is that what's going on? Because I know a lot of people think we're still in the pandemic, and we're not, and they're just riding around with, you know.
Right.
Tags and messed up license plates, but is that pertaining to these stops? And is, what are we doing to make sure that we're getting these vehicles off the road?
So, part of this, so to, to just give a little historic context, a lot of laws changed last year as it relates to pretextual stops and how we're able to stop a vehicle. We do not have means to be able to stop vehicles for defective equipment solely as a primary offense. Inspection stickers have to be four months out. Vehicle tag registration have to be four months out. But with that saying, it is not uncommon to, to see vehicles with inspections and tags that are one or two years out, out of compliance. So, officers are utilizing their probable cause to be able to stop a vehicle. Remember, it is illegal to have a cellphone in your hand and, while you're driving. So that is a primary offense, and you can't stop an individual for that. But officers are using their ability to develop probable cause to be able to stop a vehicle legally. One of the things you will note, that out of all of those stops, not every one of those stops ended in a citation. Some of them became just a educational moment or a warning for that individual, maybe to say, hey, just in case you did not know, you cannot operate your vehicle with your cellphone, or it's time for you to get your tags.
Right.
In compliance. But we are utilizing whatever means we can to, for us to reengage with the citizens. But again, a traffic stop does not always have to be negative.
Right.
It is an opportunity for us to engage and, and address the behavior, even if it means giving us some.
And I do appreciate your comments, especially, like you say, this can be an educational piece. I think that's what community policing is all about. Just that, that line that you said right there, it's not all about reprimanding the citizens and, like you say, giving them a fine or whatnot, it is about the education piece. So, that is important for us to always talk about community policing. You, as a seventeen-year-old vet, has more than enough experience to share that with your department, and, and once again, I do appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodie, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Good presentation, Chief. A couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Who's responsible for security in the parking lot in the casino grounds?
So, it is my understanding that they are, they have at least four entities that will be in the parking lot that are paid by, or, or part of the staff for Rivers Casino. They will have inside and outside security that fall under their realm. One of the things that they have done in a partnership with us, they've been gracious, that they're actually building us a substation. That is going to be a part for us to be able to not only come and assist with things that do happen at the casino, but also that will help to increase police presence in that area, even if it's just an officer going in to check a report, maybe going in to have to utilize the restroom or something of that nature. Just the vehicle sometimes being able to be parked out for a few minutes at a time will help increase visibility in that, in that area. But Rivers Casino itself will have staff that will, is, at this time, is my understanding, that they will be responsible for assisting people leaving the casino, getting to their vehicles and off the property safely.
Have we made any recommendations to them? You mentioned they, they've committed to four.
We, we, we have not, sir. We have not made any recommendations as to, as to whether it needs to be increased or not. This aspect for, of their, for them is their profession as it comes to standing up casinos, which they've done quite a bit. What we will do is, we've, I've had calls with other law enforcement agencies across the country who have casinos and gotten some, some advice from them, them on what to expect going in within the first ninety and, and six months into the process, so that I can begin not only to prepare myself, but the officers, and how we respond and things of that nature. We will continue to reevaluate how we police in that particular area, but we're, obviously, we're hoping, we know we're going to have some things and some growing pains that we have to, to address as it starts. Last month, and you have to forgive me, sometime, it's all running together. Last month, I had a opportunity to meet with police chiefs from Suffolk, Chesapeake, Suffolk, Chesapeake, Norfolk, our state police partners and the FBI, to begin to have that conversation on a larger scale, because a lot of people think that the casino is just Portsmouth's issue. It is not. You think about the amount of people that you're going to turn into or turn onto the streets after hours that maybe decide unfortunately to leave intoxicated. They may make it to Norfolk, they may make it to Suffolk. This is something that we have to look at as a holistic for the region, not just Portsmouth.
But the patrolling of their facility and their grounds.
That's our, our responsibility. Yes, sir.
That's theirs.
Well, yes, sir. The patrolling of the actual property at this time is theirs. We are not contracted or part-time or anything of that nature to do anything on that property.
Okay. The other question, traffic stops, I know they used to have road stops to check driver's license, registration. We still do those?
Absolutely, sir. It's funny you ask that, because just last Thursday, I'm sorry, the Thursday before last, we did two checkpoints simultaneously throughout the city, and the Thursday before that, we did an additional. Where, again, we're deploying every asset, resource that we know how to do as law enforcement agency, to be able to, again, engage with citizens, to do those particular things that help to make us safe and, and kind of push back on, we know that for us, and I'll, I'll just say this, a lot of our firearms are transported by vehicles. So, think about in terms, is one of the reasons we're increasing our number of traffic stops. If you stop the vehicle, you may stop, you may get a gun out of that vehicle if it's illegal. So that is one of the things that I can stand here and tell you, we are looking for individuals traveling with illegal firearms. We're going to continue to do that, we're going to continue to do those checkpoints and, and things of that nature. So, yes, sir, we're going to, working on that.
Right. A few months, it may have been towards the end of last year, or maybe the start of this year, we had a buyback program.
Yes, sir.
How success, successful was that? Because I never, I knew we were doing it, but I'd never heard any feedback on that.
So, I cannot give you numbers right now as to what they were. If, if you like, I can follow up with you.
That would be good.
However, we did get some guns off the street. We also got grandma or grandfather's World War II rifle that hadn't been fired in years. We got a BB gun. So, I guess it depends on what you would clarify as, as a success. We did get one, so that part was a success.
But, but you can give us a, a breakdown?
Yes, sir.
Some later date?
Yes, sir. I will do.
Thank you.
Councilman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the great presentation. I'm really excited about the partnership that's going to occur between your department and Rivers Casino, because that's the concern of, of everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
Who really may have some myths about casinos and safety. With this report, I guess the age-old question that comes around, and we always hearing, do we have enough officers? Are we have enough officers? Can recruit enough officers? Can we maintain enough officers without them going, crossing over to other cities? Do you believe that some of the numbers that are reflected in the reports that are given today is a result of enough officers or adequate officer? Where are we with that?
Yes, ma'am. Our, it is not the total reason, it is a portion of it. We struggle, just like every other entity, with recruiting and retaining. The fact that for the last couple of years, that, that our officers and law enforcement community has been, for lack of a better word, beaten down, with everything from social justice action to defund the police, to you name it. Have driven probably close to three thousand police officers from across the state away from the profession, and we're not talking about going to other law enforcement agencies. However, with that being said, I will still tell you, I would rather have four quarters than a hundred pennies.
Yeah.
And so, the, what you see as a result of our increase in, in productivity is nothing short of dedication by, and motivated individuals who are committed to, to a cause. Those units that I used to enjoy to be able to address or to send to deal with a particular issue, I don't, do not have that luxury as I once did. And, and so you missed it, you miss it when you get the emails that we frequently get for folks that are panhandling or sitting in, you know. Now you have to generate those for calls for service and, and things of that nature. But we are doing the best we can with recruiting. We're constantly looking at new and innovative ways. The, the state itself is embarking on a new initiative that will hopefully allow veterans who have, have experience and, and have been through an academy in the military, to be able to use that and go through a, a modified academy with a lesser time, being, being, having to go through an academy through, through us and still return, retain a certification. That is something that we're, we're looking at. We're also looking at expanding out west, not so much around here, because again, we're just trading police officers. We're looking at expanding west, trying to get our, our message out to those rural areas and other states to encourage them to come to Portsmouth. We do have a lot to offer. Part of it is us just getting our word out. We've done a media campaign previously with some success. We're going to look at doing some additional things to see if we can spur some, some folks to come this way. But we can, we continually need support of the city, obviously of the council, to ensure that we maintain what we have here in this police department. You've got some good officers here.
Yes, we want to keep that. And one last thing, as I attended the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference in Richmond this, a couple of weeks ago, I attended a session, and one of the things that they talked about was the TDOs that officers all across the state are having to do. They're pretty much a transportation service for people who are having TDO issues, and they're also a babysitting service. So, we also pushing for legislation through the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services that will provide them the funding that they need to open a new center so that the officers are not tied up in that way. So, hopefully, that will help as well, if the General Assembly sees, to fund that program this year.
Hopefully so. That will be tremendous for, for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Battle, then Councilman Moody.
Are we utilizing the sheriff's department? I see we're doing the FBI, Norfolk, Newport News. What role are they playing, or are we including them?
So, to, the sheriff's department has been gracious enough to assist us with taking over the school resource officers. That allows us to put, put additional officers on the street to be able to answer calls for service. I've reached out and had multiple conversations with the under sheriff and the sheriff to assist, and they have assisted us when called upon with not only just, as we have this event coming up on Monday, we're going to work collaboratively on that to make sure that we have a successful event and it's, and it's secure. So, there is a constant conversation back and forth. But one of the things I, I do have to highlight, that police and sheriff are different. We do have different responsibilities, and then there are also certain, not every single deputy is law enforcement certified. So there are certain aspects and situations that, the more that we work together, that it, it gives us an opportunity to become familiar with what we do and what, how we interact with things. But they have helped us out, continue to help us out on a regular basis.
Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you mentioned FUSIS. When do you see that being operational?
Sir, I'm, I'm praying that we're going to get it operational within the next forty-five days. The, the biggest part right now is supply chain, with getting the stuff here. Unfortunately, anything that has a chip seems like it's being put on, on the backhoe. So that, that for us right now is the only thing that's holding us up. I mean, it's, we're constantly... We're constantly receiving weekly updates through the project manager on both on their side and ours to ensure that, you know, we are moving forward. We've just rolled IT into the development and build out of the real-time crime center and how that's going to look. So we're steadily making progress to hold up, if any, will be just getting it here based on what they have, the ability they have to fulfill their order.
Great. You mentioned panhandling.
Yes, sir.
Particularly in the Twin Pines Road area.
Yes, sir.
That's a busy, as you probably know, that's a busy intersection.
Yes, sir.
And on and off ramp. And panhandlers are out there constantly. Somebody's going to get hurt or killed with that. But we, can't we have a sign or something that would prohibit panhandling in the medians? Because that's, that shouldn't be allowed.
Sir, I do not disagree with you. However, recent changes in decisions at a national level have said that panhandling is a constitutional or is a freedom of expression. And therefore, it is, this is why you see this boom of folks now taking to panhandling. We are working now with addressing, putting signs at our intersections that particularly are the most problematic for us, that basically request that individuals or citizens who are in that not support panhandling, but support the charities that we have that support the homeless or people who are in need. We've had conversations or in conversations with the city attorney and also traffic engineering to get those signs put up, but we want to make sure that our language is legal and also correct. You've seen that same type of thing in several localities across the country.
Yeah, and we have some local cities that have put up similar signs already.
Yes, sir.
In addition to being a safety hazard, they also leave litter behind.
Yes, sir.
As you've seen. And I think that shouldn't be allowed. There's got to be a way that we can keep them out of the traffic areas.
Yeah, so it is illegal to stand, obstruct traffic. And when that is seen, that is how that is to be addressed. That has been put out to the officers when you have, and that goes both ways. When you have a vehicle that is obstructing traffic to address one of these panhandlers, you have the ability to pull that vehicle over and issue them a summons for obstructing traffic. We've got to use every tool we can to try to limit this. But like I said, the change in opinion has caused this to be a nationwide epidemic at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam City Attorney, did you want the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Moody, excellent question. We are working with the police department to help develop some sort of language that will allow for monitoring of traffic issues. I think the way to attack it is through looking at the statutes we already have that regulate our traffic obstructions. And in those cases, that will allow them to be able to move towards the panhandling issue. So we're working diligently on that.
Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, if I could, one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I want to make sure that we are, I'm on the same page with the question that Councilman Battle asked. Our partners, as it relates to the Sheriff's Department, work with us very, very well. And again, there's not a time that I have not been able to call Sheriff Moore or the under sheriff and for them to provide anything that we need in addition to resources. There too are strap. We've asked, they've been able to assist us with TDOs. Everybody, they have court security, which is not something that we do. They have civil process, which is not something that we do. In the grand scheme of things, there is a role to play in all of this. You won't see a police officer go into a jail and stand guard over a prisoner. So as the primary law enforcement agency in the city, there are parts of this that we're going to try to address. And when we need help, we're going to call any and everybody who has the ability to come and help us. And the Sheriff Department and Sheriff Moore and his folks have always come to assist us whenever we've called, and we call them quite frequently.
Thank you, Chief. I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Typically, do you see an uptick in crimes? We're coming on the holiday season, right? And that's the fourth quarter. So do you see an uptick historically in that time of year? And if so, what are some of the things that we as a community can do proactively, right? For example, send out information, notices and whatever to perhaps make people aware to lock your cars and do the things that, just the little things that may make a difference?
So one of the things that drives our numbers through the roof is stolen vehicles. And it's something just as simple as turn your car off when you go into the store. I know it's getting cold and people want to warm their car up before they go to work. Buy you a spare key. Lock your door and warm it up. Don't make it easy for a person just to go in and take your, open your door. Don't leave key fobs in your vehicle and the vehicle unlocked. These are simple steps that minimize the likelihood that you will be a victim and things of that nature. As we approach the holidays, a couple of things that, you know, utilizing the buddy system when going out, making sure that you don't, as you start to take packages into the house, don't pile all your packages up showing that you've got a brand-new TV and things of that nature. But traditionally, yes, sir, during the holiday season, I call it desperation time because just like anybody else, individuals who suffer from poverty and other things, they want to do for their families as well. So sometimes people get into desperation mode and they do things that they might not traditionally do or get involved in. So it is incumbent upon all of us, other law-abiding citizens, to make sure that we do what we can, not become a potential victim. And that's as simple as being aware of your surroundings, you know, letting somebody know where you're going if you're coming to the house, making sure you have your keys in your hand before you get out of your vehicle and making sure, again, I can't say it enough, lock your door. It just amazes me how many cars we get stolen every single day and the person say, I left it running. You just gave a person who's been walking all day an invitation for a ride. That's it. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. The second question is, with the walks and the focus on the areas, you know, that have been identified, are we seeing, you know, you say more citizens are coming out and participating. Are we seeing more information being shared as a result of what could potentially or what is happening in the community as it relates to crime?
So I have to commend the citizens of Portsmouth right now because they are definitely calling. They are sending information. We've just been able to put out information in regards to our most recent homicide on Carver Circle where we've identified a suspect in that. We've identified a suspect in our homicide from Dale's home. And again, I highlight those, not that they're the most, that they are, but they are sometimes the hardest ones to solve. We've made a lot of arrests in our property crimes where we've had people who are burglarizing houses here recently. And that information has been put out. But the citizens are calling, and I got to continue to encourage them to do just that when they see something, say something. There's so many ways today to get that information to the police department and remain anonymous. Continue to urge the citizens to do that.
Thanks, Chief. And the last question, and this is something that I'll get to you, ma'am, in a minute. Perhaps the city attorney can add on to. We have been talking about, and I know we have, within our city attorney's office, a focus on removing blight in our communities. And I've been doing, you know, when we were up at the VML conference, they talked even more about taking blight as, and using blight as a strategy for crime reduction. So I just wanted to know, are we seeing success with that process? In addition to that, I know it is a process, so it takes time. You just can't do those things at the flippers of switch. So how are we doing in that area?
I will tell you, thank you, Mayor. Excellent question. The chief alluded to a, the code enforcement. Thank you, I'm trying to get the name. The Code Enforcement Group, and we are actively working with that. That includes many areas, including our inspectors as all the way up to the Commissioner of Revenue. And what we are doing, as you know, Bob Marriage in my office is a longtime litigator of these issues. He works very closely with the inspector's office. And what we're doing independently on our day-to-day litigation is handling those matters. So that keeps the day-to-day flow going. But also with the efforts put together by the team, we are also doing more of a global addressing of the issues more systematically, which allows for support where needed and enforcement where needed. So that's become one of the primary issues that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'm not sure if this question directs to you or to our city manager. Last week, we attended a community roundtable discussion with Congressman Bobby Scott and, of course, US Senator Mark Warner. And our Commonwealth attorney was present and we speak into the violent crimes that occur. And of course, they have a victim witness program, but they don't have a witness protection program that is funded. And that's something that citizens, the community, needs in order for those witnesses to come forth and to help find out what some of these crimes are. So I guess, Madam City Manager, I'm not sure if that funding comes from us or is it through police budget or is it through the state funding or is it federal funded? How do we get the request out there that Portsmouth needs this help in order to get our witness protection program?
So that is a new, something new that is for us in law enforcement, for us to even embark on, that is something that they've always done at a federal level. But it is something new for us as a police department and particularly as a city to look at, to be able to say, when we have these individuals, what are the resources that are available to be able to move this person safely so they'll hopefully cooperate? We have come up with a lot of alternatives, some partnerships through not only PRHA, when we have individuals who own public assistance and to be able to move them if they are a person that is on house assistance, but, and there is an ability to move them. We do also use some funds that we do have when we have need to put a person up for a day or two into a house or send them to a family member's house, maybe out of state. What we're talking about when it talks in particular to a, actually, witness program, that is a larger conversation where money would have to be put aside. I know they talked, Mr. Scott talked about sending it to the state police. You know, I think something like that obviously should come through, if anything, the Commonwealth attorney and us have a conversation because as the police department, we're generally the ones that hear the threat first. And so we know when a person, when they're in danger based on something, they generally reach out to us. And sometimes when you're talking about having the ability to move someone quickly, those things matter. It is something that we do need to have a larger conversation. Ms. Chapman and I have spoken about it before that meeting about actually coming up with a resource for that. And so it's already in the infant stages. I don't know what, if anything, will be done by the state, but I'm sure Ms. Sherry will be talked to about that and see if they can legislate for it.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, once again for the presentation. And I just want to convey to you on behalf of the council, you know, we wish you guys well, stay safe out there and continue to keep up the great work.
Thanks, sir.
You and your team. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Jenkins. Please thank the staff for me as well. Next, we have interim director Brian Donahue and Ms. Pam Crum, who will provide an update on economic development as well as Portsmouth At Work Program.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager and city attorney. I am Brian Donahue. I'm the interim director for economic development in the city of Portsmouth. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening to share an update on the Economic Development Department's Portsmouth At Work Workforce Development Initiative. Since its launch in February of 2021, virtually, and then in person as of May of the same year, the Portsmouth At Work Center has been working to assist Portsmouth residents with obtaining the resources and skills necessary to attain employment and career advancement in the city of Portsmouth and in the Hampton Roads region overall. I am joined by my colleague this evening, Pam Crum, who oversees the Portsmouth At Work Initiative and who will be presenting to you this evening some background information on the Portsmouth At Work Program, the services that the city is providing to its residents, and insight into the progress that is being made as we work to increase the quality of life for our residents. Pam, I will tell you is the subject matter expert that we are very fortunate to have here with us in the city of Portsmouth, and her team is doing great work in our office to help our residents. So with that, Pam, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you present.
Thank you, Brian. Mayor, city manager Chapman, Mrs. Graham Williams, Ms. White, members of council. It is my pleasure to be with you all this evening to talk about this initiative and the work that is being done on behalf of our residents. We've all heard how I can't find a job from our citizens and we hear our employer state that they can't find employees to fill positions. And so that is exactly what this initiative is about, is connecting the two to each other to ensure that our residents are being provided livable wages to maintain their households. So we have two overarching goals for this program. It's an alternative pathway to meaningful employment opportunities for our residents and especially those that need to be re-skilled and upskilled in order to earn livable wage jobs. And we believe each resident who wants to work should be put to work. We have four principles that guide this work, that is accessibility and inclusion to programs and services, that they are ready to be hired when they apply and go for that interview, that we have a collaborative ecosystem where we're working with our regional partners, our community partners, our city departments, to ensure that we're providing wraparound services and all of the needs and resources that our residents need, and that it is an integrated process for our residents so that when, no matter where they enter the system, that we're all ready to assist them when they come to any of us for services. So this ecosystem is made up of both our external and internal partners. As you can see, there are several of our partners. I really have to thank our Portsmouth Housing Authority. They are a huge partner with the success of the Portsmouth At Work Initiative as well as our Hampton Roads Workforce Council, TCC, Workforce Solution Division and the like. Our internal partners, I just couldn't make it without them. They've been great, our social services, our human resource department, our police department, Parks and Recreation, and definitely our libraries. Especially when this initiative came online, we were virtual, so they did a lot of work to help me, help stand up this program. So how do we know we have an impact? How do we know this is working? So we're going to talk about our key indicators, which are looking at each year what we should see. And what we should see overall is an increase in our median income, median household income, our per capita income. We should definitely see a decrease in our poverty rate as well as looking at our assisted, I mean, I'm sorry, asset limited, income constrained employee residents, commonly known as ALIS households. income constrained employee residents, commonly known as ALIS households, that we're seeing a change in those numbers as well, where we see those numbers decrease and their incomes increase. So what we look like, this is an aggregate of data from the Census Bureau, Quick Facts for Portsmouth. And so, our baseline, this program did start during the pandemic. Last year was our first year of full service. So this will be our baseline coming forward to you in the future. This is where we will base this data and information from. We have been collecting the data over the two years that I have been here, and I can tell you that over the two years, our median household income has increased, our per capita has increased, and our poverty rate has decreased. Thank you, Mayor. So the services that we provide at the Portsmouth At Work Center, as I stated, began in February of 2021. They were virtual. We were helping to assist residents with obtaining employment by working from home, helping to train them to work from home, because a lot of employers and jobs were still in the virtual state. And then we opened permanent, open, I'm sorry, for in-person services, May 2021. So with that, for our year, I'm going to go over some data of our participants. And so as you can see by this first slide, we have 677 registrants for the program. So that is what this data is based on. So 74% of those registrants were female, 24% male, and 2% did not answer. Of that, 94% were black, African-American, 4% white, and 2% chose not to answer the question. Our age group, our largest age group, are our young adults, and they're in that category of 16 to 30. I will tell you that it is more of our 18 to 25-year-olds that have participated in the program. Our middle-aged adults, 31 to 45, I'm sorry, I didn't say, they're 53%. Our middle-aged adults at 28%, and our older adults that are 46 and older, we had about 16%. And 3% chose not to answer. 88% of those individuals state that they were the head of household in their home and were not working. So this is a positive for us, that they were actually participating. So of that 677, 595 of them were not working, and 40 of them, we actually re-skilled and upskilled into higher-paying jobs. Of our participants, 72% of them were in a disadvantaged status, which is not surprising, given that they were not in the workforce when they came to us, and 25% of them were not. So once again, we had 677 participants. 468 of them actually completed a program. So we are very excited with that. 69% overall completed a program. We started out with our digital literacy, understanding that we do have a digital divide in our community. So we wanted to make sure that we skilled up anyone that felt that they did not have the digital skills to go out and do a job. And this is also important because of the fact that, as we know, most jobs require you to do something on a computer. Whether you're doing data entry or you're typing on a computer, you need to know how to access and utilize a computer. So that was important, and so that was a part of our work readiness process. I'm going to highlight some of the larger programs here, and we're going to talk about them all in a little bit. But our Work From Home Program, we had 68 registrants and 65 of them participated. What's important about that program is they're not just working from home here for Portsmouth employers. They can be working for someone as far as California. They are not limited. They're only limited by their applications. Our, yes, sir?
I did have a couple of questions for you real quick on this slide. So you, you and certainly others, attended the regional meeting for certainly our economic status of the region last week. And one of the things that you heard, as I heard, was there is a great need now and into the future for nurses, right?
Yes.
And I see in healthcare, we're making progress, and I like to see that. One of the other things that I heard, which I don't see represented here as much, and that's okay, because that's, I know we got work to do. You know, Portsmouth is a blue-collar town. It is a shipbuilding town. It is a ship repair town. So I don't see a whole lot of focus on the maritime industry and maritime academy skills trades for the maritime industry. I just think that there's a huge opportunity for our youth, in addition to our adults, to get into these industries. They're good-paying jobs, and I know you guys are focused on helping that grow. I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate certainly you all and the work that you are doing. This is great news.
Okay, wonderful. And to answer your question, Mayor, what we try not to do is replicate services. So as I stated with our ecosystem, so when it comes to our maritime industry, our go-to partner is TCC. So individuals that come through the program that are actually looking for those maritime jobs, we either send them to TCC, or we partner with Virginia Maritime Association and try to push them in that direction. Our programs, which I'll talk about as well a little further in the presentation, is quick, easy certifications that get you in and out of our door in under 12 weeks. Our longest program is 12 weeks long, with the vast majority of them being three weeks. So, but anything more than that, we actually work with our partners, because once again, we don't want to duplicate services. So with that, we did have a partnership with Tidewater Staffing, though, for those entry-level positions. And we did have individuals that were hired through that process. With that, our HRT program, which I highly encourage individuals, we're still working with the five that registered with that program, that gets them a Class B. They are employees with HRT by Week Three, making $19.50 an hour. They end up with that Class B, and they're operators, bus operators, from Day One. Our, I say do not be alarmed over the CDL Class A class, or registrants for that at the 118, and with nine only have completed. There are very, there are various reasons why an individual cannot go to a CDL Class A training. One, nine times out of 10 is because of their driving record. So we do try to remediate that and help those individuals find ways to actually decrease those points that are on their license. But there are some things that we can't work with, just depending. One being, if you've got more than one DUI, DWI, you're automatically disqualified until that resolves itself. And then our healthcare, as the mayor indicated, we were very excited with this. And so what you see here, this actually is also data from last fiscal year, reminder. We did actually have every person complete this program. So those numbers will actually show next year because they completed in this fiscal year. But we're very excited that all 168 of them have completed the program. All of them have either, they're a mixture. They either already had jobs and they came to us to increase their opportunity for advancement, or to actually make more money if they received a certification. So such as your CNAs, receiving their medication aid certification, they're now eligible for higher pay because they have that medication aid certification. Our medical assistance, that helps them get through school a lot faster as well, to that area, much of what we heard. So Portsmouth is contributing to the healthcare industry, and it is one of our largest programs. We are participating, of course, with the City Manager's Initiative Rock the Block. We have been out separately, and in addition to those campaigns in Prentice Park, Crow道, and with PRHA, we will be joining their community bus drives around to the various properties as well this fiscal year. And we've already had 25 residents in those particular, in those targeted areas already registered. So as I talked about our digital literacy trainings, there were three pathways to that digital learn. And one of them is actually called digital learn. And that is your very basic entry level. You've never worked a computer, didn't know anything about a computer, that's where you start. All the way up to a assessment-type training that actually gives you a certification. One of the things that is important about this program is every program that a resident participates in ends in some type of certificate or certification. And that's important for their resumes, for them to be able to show the work that they've done and that they are ready to work and that they're trainable. Our career pathway programs, these are programs that are all directly, directly attached to an employer at the end of the program, whether it is through our services at Portsmouth At Work or the provider that is actually our vendor for the service. So our healthcare program, we started out, if you notice at the little flyer to the left, we started out with five programs, and we've expanded that to over 20 programs. So not only do we have the nursing-type patient care certifications, we now have front-office training as well for those that may not want to work with patients but actually want to work in the healthcare industry. So we're now up to 21 programs in our, in our, under our service. Some of those are a little longer. They're 24 weeks. But we are already seeing a lot of success, and a lot of our residents that are in those programs are speaking highly, and they're actually ahead. So they're actually going to finish in less than 24 weeks because they can keep moving forward even when they complete a lesson. Our Class A training, we are now with a provider. When we first started this program, it was a six-week training. We've got a new vendor who's providing that service in four weeks. So we're getting our individuals out in the workforce in four weeks. And there's lots of opportunities if you've, anybody who has seen a now hiring, for anyone with a truck, knows that there's no shortage of CDL drivers needed. We even have a local employer here offering $30,000 sign-on bonuses. So we really try to push that program to our residents. I spoke about the HRT Drive Now program, which is important. Individuals start off with us. What it is, is it's really a program to help individuals that have had barriers to employment but want to obtain a CDL. That's what this program actually does. They actually start out with us for a couple of weeks, and then we actually put them, they actually end up in a regular training program with HRT. No one knows they came through a special program to get there. Everybody's starting out from Day One when they reach HRT. But our program helps to overcome those barriers that they have had to employment and to ensure that they're successful. HRT actually provides us with trainers that come over and help them through that first process, because anyone going for their Class A has to obtain their Class B permit. So that's what we actually help them to obtain before they transition over to HRT. Our Public Works Program, so the city, of course, wanted to make sure that we weren't asking our community to do anything that we weren't willing to do. So our Public Works Program came online just a few weeks ago, and it's already seeing success. As of today, we've already had seven individuals to come to the program and to participate. We have four of them, I'm sorry, two of them already working on-site. Two of them are in CDL, and two are finishing this week as well. So it's already showing, like I said, some success. The great thing about this is recognizing the fact that some of our jobs didn't require, necessarily require a high school diploma. We want you to have a high school diploma. But this program actually allows an individual who's 18 years old, who has not completed their GED or high school diploma, to come to our program. We do have two pathways to their GED. We are always going to push them to complete their high school education. So we do assist them. There is the partnership with Portsmouth Adult Ed, and then we have a virtual GED program for those, because, of course, Adult Ed is during the day, and everyone, if they're working, they can't go during the day. So we do have another pathway for the individuals to obtain their GED. Our Smart Start credential training program was birthed around the hospitality industry. And if you have been watching anything around what's happening, our hospitality industry is rebounding. That is one of the topics from the meeting that the mayor spoke about earlier. So the Smart Start credential, although we, it birthed from the hospitality side, it is actually good for any industry, because what it does is it assesses an individual. Through those assessments, they have a comprehension assessment, and then we take them through the ACT National Career Readiness Certification, which is commonly known as the NCRC. Anyone who knows anything about maritime and the Virginia Maritime Association, if you've got your NCRC, they're going to automatically take you, because they already know that you are trainable for any job that they need to train you to do. So that was the two reasons why we implemented this particular program. So it put our residents at the top of the line, regardless of what their barriers were, regardless of their work history. This program actually says our folks are ready to work. Our call center agent training actually goes along with our Work From Home program. Although you may work from home, want to work from home, you may not know how to work from home. So the training that we provide is this certification. This is a nationally recognized certification as well for call center agents. And then our Work From Home program, once again, that's a self-paced training program that individuals, once they are actually registered with the training, they are given access to a database. They have, there are two different ones. It just depends on the time limit that a person wants to get through the training. One, they have six months' access to a database for jobs. And then the other one is a year, because there are refresher courses. Because, of course, things change within the industry. And so the year-long one actually gives them the ability to go back in and receive any of that additional training. So our Youth Bill Program, I talked to several of you about this when I first came on in 2020. And so I am so excited that we were able to bring this forward, which goes to the mayor's statement about our maritime industry and our construction industry. This is solely focused on 16- to 24-year-olds who have not obtained their high school diploma. So this program is a six-month commitment. They actually receive four certifications in this program. They receive HBAC, Plumbing, Electrical, and Construction certifications. They're OSHA-10 CPR. They also obtain their GED in this program. So at the end of their six months, they are ready to go to work. It is attached to employers that are familiar with the program. We take them out to do some career exploration during this process. The program is not here in Portsmouth. We do transport them to Newport News. Newport News was the first to introduce this program to the community. And we were able to partner with Newport News and Volunteers of America, Chesapeake, Carolina, to actually provide this program for our Portsmouth residents. So we do have six individuals that started yesterday, and so they were all eagerly ready to go. Their transportation is being provided by a local taxi company, American International, who is already acting like Mama Hen. She called me all weekend long. She called them to make sure that they were, you know, you'd be here on time. She called to tell me they got there on time. She told me she got them back. She's also SWAM certified. So we hit all the boxes with this particular program. During the six months, trying to keep them actually motivated in the program. It also comes with a stipend. They do receive $150 a week. It is not guaranteed. It is based on your participation and you moving along in the program. So you can be docked your $20 one day if you're not participating, or $10 that day because you're not participating. So it is not a guarantee. It is based off of your performance.
I do have a question regarding that. I mean, what do you see? I mean, I hear, we hear a lot of stuff about our young people. Our young people, they want these opportunities, right? They're engaged. They want to get involved. Would that be accurate?
It is accurate. I happened to be in a meeting, at a meeting with City Manager Chapman, excuse me, and Interim Chief Jenkins, where we had that specific conversation. And sometimes it's not about the young person not wanting to participate in the program. It's about finding a parent to sign a piece of paper in order for them to participate in the program. And so that's what we've run into. Our 16 to, 16 and 17-year-olds are compulsory, meaning they have to go to school. And the only way they can participate And the only way they can participate in a program is Portsmouth Public Schools has to say, we release them from compulsory, but they've got to be in a program that's actually going to provide that high school education. And so that's what we have done, and we've created that partnership with public school system to implement that. So in a nutshell, the Portsmouth at Work Center, we provide job fairs. We've had a couple of job fairs throughout, within the city. We were at the Sportsplex, we've been over to the, help me out, the Renaissance? Renaissance, I'll get there. We hold Meet the Employer events to actually bring the employers to the community, to meet our residents, for our residents to meet them, to understand what qualifications that they need, or to just apply. We offer in-person career planning opportunities, networking, private space for coaching, because when we're discussing your business, you need to feel that it's comfortable and it's private. And we do offer programs virtually and in person. But there's a little bit more to us. We are also considered the Small Business Center, and we have a Smart Start Entrepreneurship Training Program, understanding that everybody can't go to a job, they can't work in brick and mortar, but they've got skills and abilities to actually run their own business or create their own business. Take their skills and abilities and turn it into lifelong work. So with that program, we take them through how to run a business. That actually also ends in a certification. They actually also get a certificate of completion from the University of Santa Clara. And they are also eligible to apply for the EDA's grant program, the investment grant program, sorry, twisted my words. We are attached to a few banks as well, that offers low-interest loans to those businesses that are interested. And then our Smart Start Minority Business Program is our government contracting program, where we actually work with our government contracting businesses to help them understand how to actually work with the government, how to actually find those opportunities, and that you can get rich off of one community, you've actually got to expand and find all of those other opportunities. And so we do offer a training program to help them understand that. We work with Virginia Department of Small Business Supply Diversity to bring those opportunities to our small businesses. We also help match them with businesses in the community and within the region to help mentor them as well. So we do have a couple of testimonials about what has happened in our, in our center. So we do have one, Mr. Branch, who heard through the grapevine about our program. He's a CDL obtainer, and didn't think he was going to make it through the program, and he did. He did not want long haul, and that's what he was afraid of, was somebody's going to put him out on long haul, because he's got a family. And so he was able to find employment that keeps him right here at home. And so he has actually been the catalyst out there in the community, telling other people about coming, coming and registering for the program. So we really appreciate Mr. Branch. And then Mr. Boni is a recent medical assistant obtainer through our healthcare program, and he was having trouble actually getting into school. And so he was just so appreciative that we had this program for Portsmouth residents, so that he had the opportunity to actually participate and start on his pathway to being an RN. And so that is us in a nutshell. We do have a website, portsmouthatwork.com. You can send us email at atwork, and that's spelled out, at portsmouthva.gov. Myself, Sondra Briggs, who is our Workforce Development Specialist, who came aboard this past June, and then, of course, Mr. Donahue, who is our director, and so I guess somebody else took control of that. And so with that, that completes my presentation, Mayor.
Well, once again, this is just wonderful. I think that the work, we don't often hear about the work that is done in the trenches, and I want to thank you, ma'am, certainly, on behalf of council, and, you know, Mr. Donahue. But when I think about what you all have done with this program, it's wonderful, it's positive for our citizens. I would, I would ask, and I remember you saying it, no one else has this, is that correct?
Correct. This is the second program that I've had the privilege of standing up, and my first program doesn't touch this by far. And our counterpart is not providing this full service that we're providing here now.
Well, I think that's, that's another prime example of we are getting good things done in the city of Portsmouth. And the most important part that I see out of this, outside of the jobs and the training that you're getting folks, you're giving them real hope again, is that with the young people that we are getting trained and opportunities, those 17-year-olds, you know, we're saving lives, essentially.
Absolutely.
And, and I think that the citizens need to understand, without the support of all of us, working collaboratively together, we don't get there. And, and I just want to say once again, I can't overstate it, we are grateful for the efforts that you all have put in, and for those citizens who have taken advantage of these opportunities. And I just am looking forward to more growth and progress.
Well, before you dismiss me, I would like to thank the council, because without your support, we definitely couldn't do this, and that of the EDA. So this really is a kudos to you all for taking that step and believing in that we could do this, and we're just so appreciative. I am appreciative to have the opportunity to provide the services that we're providing and to do it for you. So, thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Ms. Kroom and Director Donahue. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and the public, I wanted, I thought it was important for, to share this information with you all and our citizens, to let them know what services the city is providing. I also am happy to report that we had a good turnout at our Rock the Block Community Cleanup in Craddock last Saturday. We had 57 participants, and we filled 98 bags of trash, weighing about 980 pounds. We had three bulk trucks pick up 3.5 tons of debris, which combined weight of 8,040 pounds and four tons of debris. So a lot of trash was picked up. Our community walk, we're still working on the date, so that will be determined. And that concludes our presentations for the night, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, for your leadership, and thank you for those efforts and the Do we have any council liaison reports at this time? City managers report?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. CMR 22306, the adoption of an ordinance accepting radiological emergency preparedness funding in an amount of $700 to go to the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. 22-307, an adoption of an ordinance in a, to appropriate $10,000, no, yeah, $10,000 of inmate canteen system revenue to the sheriff's office. And then there will be an item submitted by council for an agenda that, that holds a resolution to ratify the declaration of local emergency that was issued in preparation for last week's nor'easter, and council action is required on that. And that concludes my report, sir. Thank you.
Once again, thank you, ma'am. Now, are there any council liaison reports? Seeing none, this work session is adjourned, and we will reconvene at our regular council meeting, 7:00 PM.